Meeting is the, this is the city council COVID-19 study session. Should we start off with a roll call?
Yes, council member Rarback?
Here.
Council member Penrose? Oh, I think, are we still waiting for Deborah?
I see she just joined.
Council member Penrose?
Are you there, Deb?
I'm here.
Roll call.
Council member Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Excellent. Good starting off. Um, Bob, do you want to start us off with anything before we go into some topics?
Um, again, the purpose of the session, which I think we're now in our third or fourth, was to, to leave it as wide open as possible to discuss issues related to the pandemic, the city's response, community needs, business needs, et cetera. So that is the intention and you have been allowing ample time for public comment during this portion in addition to the regular meeting. So I think that's worked out well. We did put two subtopics on the agenda to get people going. It doesn't mean that we have to keep the topic, keep the discussion to those two topics, but we decided those were kind of follow-ups to two weeks ago. And those were beach access and beach parking and also the use of face masks. So those are two topics that were carryovers, bless you, and certainly ones, Mr. Mayor, that you thought would be good for this session. So I'll turn it back to you and you can roll from there.
Perfect. So great top, yeah. And then if you are in the public and want to have any issue addressed during this, we can, we'll start off with the public. And you can either raise your, you can either contact Jessica Blair. Or you can, in the participant box down below, you can hit the participant box and you can raise your hand. And if you hit the participant box, there's invite down at the bottom, mute me and raise hand. So if you want to raise your hand and ask about anything, that's how you would do it. Jessica will let us know and we can go from there.
If I could add, Mayor Eisen, of our attendees, if you would like to speak on the Zoom meeting, please list your first and last name for security purposes. Thanks.
Cool. So while we give the public a few minutes to, to get there, if they want to contribute anything, let's start off with parking as the overall subject. Last, and, and, and last we discussed, we were looking at drafting a letter to the coastal commission. I know we did that. And Bob, do you want to talk about what?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So it was a follow-up item. Thank you for mentioning that. It came up at the last study session. Yeah, it did. And after a discussion, that particular discussion was not so much focused on beach, the beach parking lots. It was focused on the, I guess, the impact of not having beach parking lots, which is people parking in the neighborhoods. And we had a good, healthy discussion about the impacts of people parking in the neighborhoods. There was significant input, input from the community, a great discussion from the council. And the, the musing that went on was, well, you know, is there reason here to have a temporary permit parking program in some of these neighborhoods that are really being impacted? And so there was a discussion about generally how those are used and the fact that the coastal commission generally frowns on them because of course their mission is to promote as much access to all, to the beach areas. But given the health crisis, the thought was, well, this is different. And due to the public health emergency here, the commission may see this a different way and may understand that we need to take special measures. So with that, we were asked to draft such a letter to the commission at the staff level, not go too high. We did that and they were very responsive. So I will give them that. So Jill Ikis and I worked on that letter. We sent that to them. And quickly, within 48 hours, they responded. It was not necessarily a surprising response. It wasn't no and it wasn't yes. But it was kind of calling us on our premise, which was, hey, this is a public health concern and the council is interested in exploring permits, particularly because of public health concerns. And so their request back to us in an email response was that they, they would consider that if the county public health officer communicated to them, and I would take that to be a communication in writing and with county public health officer letterhead indicating that in fact, the situation without a permit parking program did, was constituting a, a, a public health challenge in the public health officer's opinion. So that was the response we got back. So we could take, take the next step and, and talk to the county about that. But this then, I think, also relates to other conversations about the beach area in general, enforcement. Saul is also here. John's here and he's also at some point tonight going to talk about the work we're doing at Poplar. And others are here to talk about how the, the new county order is slowly changing things. And so given the context of the discussion of beach parking, I guess I would imagine that we should wait for the context of the entire discussion before the council then decides how to direct us on whether we keep pursuing the permit parking with the commission or not. Sorry for that long-winded response, but it was a short email and that was it. With a, with a letter from the public health officer, they, they would at least consider it.
Okay. Uh, council, any, any comments on that so far?
I think at this point I'm interested in seeing if state parks can't open the parking lots.
That's where I'm at, Bill. That's good.
You know, I saw an article today that state parks basically opened parking lots at 27 different state parks, including Santa Cruz and things. So, you know.
I am, I am in the same boat. I am, I am all about, I've been talking to Bob on the side about trying to figure out how to open all the areas. State parks, Post and us hopefully as quickly as possible in the ideal. But I wanted to get council, council input before we move forward with any of these ideas.
And Mr. Mayor, before more council input on that, this might just aid the conversation. So I did have a conversation with the superintendent of state parks this morning, Chris For. We've been in periodic contact obviously as this has gone on. And he, he reiterated me to me this morning, kind of along the lines of council member Ruddick's comment that they seem to be opening parking lots elsewhere. That they, they are prepared to open the ones in this district and in San Mateo County. They have put together a reopening plan. So they are ready to take whatever measures they're going to take. And along with opening their parking lots, they would open their restrooms as well. He did say to me that they don't have to do it in concert. They could open restrooms first, but their, their preference would be to open restrooms and parking lots at the same time. That was the first point he made to me. And the second point he made was that they're ready to do that. They would, they would like direction from the, from us and the county. So they want to hear from us and they want to hear from the county that we want them to do that. That was the second point. And then the third point he made is that if they would not be ready to do it for this weekend. So the earliest they could do it would be the weekend after this. So.
Good. This weekend, this weekend's 70 degrees and sunny. So that, that bodes well.
He, he said it would just be, it would be too quick for them to, to turn it, if we didn't get an answer to them tomorrow and then just knowing how, you know, we'd have to talk to the county. He just, he just said that they wouldn't be able to do it by, by this Saturday. So I'll turn it back over to you. That I just wanted to report that that's what I heard from state parks.
And then.
Ask them to do it this weekend anyway.
There you go. And then who, Debbie, Debbie, you want to repeat what you said just so we can hear you?
Yeah. So, um, I think we need to see if we can't mobilize pressure to open them this weekend. I mean, I think it's nice that they're willing to do it maybe next weekend, but you know, why not just push it a little bit?
And, and then Bob, who is communicating with the county? Is that, is that something that I should be doing during my call with them? Is that your job? Is that somebody else's job? Who, who is, how are we, how are we organizing that?
No, I was planning to do that. And in fact, I was planning to send a text to the county administrator, Mike Caligle, today. I'll, I'll do it right now. The other entity that I thought it was right that we do this in concert with was the city of Pacifica, have a good relationship with them. They operate a state park and, and they, you know, they have similar situations. They're very aligned with us on this from my conversations with the city manager. Their police chief is always, is also very aligned with Saul on how they're managing things. And so my thought was the two city managers, we'd get a meeting with Mike tomorrow and, and start pushing, pushing that if that was the direction.
Okay. Deborah, I'm curious to hear your thoughts in particular on this.
Well, what I'm thinking is if we do open, ask them to open the state parks and they comply, that it would make sense for us to be opening our parking lots as well. There's no sense in doing one and not the other. In fact, all that's, it's not going to help the Poplar Beach area at all. It will only help the Kelly Beach entrance. So.
No, and I think, I think that's the idea is to do it all, all together.
Sal?
So Mayor and council, as you know, when this all began about nine weeks ago, we did a coordinated effort with county parks, state parks, Caltrans, CHP, and the other agencies on the coast side to organize a no parking restrictions and set up all the barricades from Devil Slide to Pescadero. I think it would behoove us to actually, after Bob speaks with the county manager and there's an agreement there, we can also get a group discussion with county parks. Because that's also going to affect their parks along the coast side, Tenetis Creek, Fitzgerald Marine Reserve and all the other entities, including the harbor. They've been having some issues as well. So just like we coordinated with the parking aspect of it or the no parking zones that we set up along highway one, we would just have to do a follow-up conversation and Pacifica Police Department was also part of that conversation initially. So I can go ahead and coordinate that effort with Bob as well.
That'd be great. Yeah. And obviously Post needs to be included as well. Bob and I were talking about that. I believe they do the one at Cowell Beach, that, that parking lot. And that, you know, so people don't keep parking on highway one. So we're all aligned. And that might take a week, maybe two to coordinate all those efforts. And I think we probably should, I don't know, wait until all that stuff is coordinated. I have no idea how long that takes. What's, and then do we, do we change our signage then? And that might switch to the mask conversation. But what, what do we end up doing? We do have signs up now. The shelter in place order keeps changing. So we're, we're kind of like adjusting with that all the time. And then we're also kind of like, what are we going to end up doing with the mask? Separate conversation possibly, but like leads into this. What communication are we, are we then putting in those signs once everything's open?
As long as we're talking with the county, it seems to me we should get them to rescind this nutsy idea about no 11 to five, no access to beaches. It, it's only going to make the public think that we're crazy. And I'm not in favor of public thinking we're crazy.
Yeah. Yeah. So that is a good, that is a good, how, how do we go about that? Is that, again, should we just reach out to Scott Morrow directly and ask him if we can be involved in that conversation again? Do we bring it up on the county call tomorrow? Do we have Bob bring it up in his message to Mike Caligle? How, how do we do it? How do we deal with that?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, yeah, I would, I mean, I would suggest maybe all of the above. So you're going to have your call at 12:30. You know, fair game. I'll certainly try to get a, a, a meeting with Mike before your 12:30 call. So we're, we're setting it up behind the scenes. But I would agree, part, part of that conversation is beach parking reopening plan, but I would not even start that conversation without bringing up the 11 to five provision. So that is problematic. It's, it would be contradictory to open beach parking lots. So the two conversations do go together. And you know, I just, we obviously have to, do have to navigate through the various agencies here. And even the county themselves, we all know, there's just different reporting structures there. So we gotta, we gotta make sure everyone's on board and do this in a collective way. Maybe, maybe we don't get everyone to agree, but we certainly have the right to start moving towards opening our parking lot. And state parks has indicated that they're willing and ready to do that too, but they certainly don't want to do it. They, you know, they don't want to do it if the county in any way is, is, you know, somewhat in, you know, has a reason to, to disagree. So we certainly want, you know, everyone to be on board with this. That's the best way to do it. But
No, it's the best way.
Bring up the 11 to five thing because that would have to be rescinded if we're going to open parking lots.
Vice Mayor Brownstone, looks like you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think the key operative words on our city manager just said was, did the county have a reason for the 11 to five? And at this point, we don't really have a lot of insight into what that reason was. So I would suggest, you know, may, I don't know, Bob, if you can shoot a letter to Mike and just say, hey, can we get either from you or county health officer, the reasoning behind that, you might get something back as early as, you know, tomorrow morning, even before our 12:30 county meeting. Because that just seems like this great missing piece. Maybe there is something that we don't know. And how they expected that to be enforced. I'd love to see the beach, parking lots open this weekend. It would take a lot of pressure off because otherwise I think this weekend will be particularly busy and potentially chaotic. Sal, I'm starting to see that. That's understatement of the air. And I'll tell you this, if they get on the parking lots, they have to open those bathrooms because we've already been getting letters and issues that people will find bathrooms one way or another, whether they exist or not. And that's caused some issues. So minimally that, and then we'll see as many parking lots as we can get open would be great. So you know, minutes are counting. So just as quickly as we can act on that would be terrific.
Okay. Yeah. My, yeah. I, I imagine that coordinating with all these agencies and different pieces might take a little while, just to be fair. But, but I think that's the, the general direction. Let's see, has everybody weighed in on this? Deborah, do you want to, anything else? No, you're good. Um, are we pretty, is that enough direction? Do we have enough, do we need to consolidate?
No, I'm definitely clear. I'm clear. I'm going to get a message to the superintendent of state parks that we want them to push for this weekend and not wait for two weeks. I'll get that message here within the next hour. I'll send him a text and I'll get something set up with Mike before 12:30 and asking the question about the 11 to five and what was the thinking and then use that as a pretext to get into the, the conversation. And then, you know, if it then gets brought up on the 12:30 call that some of you participate in, he'll be all ready for it. And by then maybe we have a plan.
Yeah, I'll bring it up tomorrow during that. Here's, here's the big question. The, um, I mean, rescinding that order might take, I, I just, all the different pieces to come together before this weekend, I think is a, it's a lot of, I don't, I don't want to just do this haphazardly because it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. But I do agree. I like the, the thought process of putting, you know, that time period in place. But I, I guess where I'm coming is I don't mind waiting and coordinating if, if we need to do it that way. Just because I think that there's a, there's actually a lot, I feel like there's a lot that goes into this. Maybe not, but we'll see.
So I would respectfully just point out that this recent order about the 11 to five happens like between Scott Morrow, the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
Scott Morrow and the Board of Supervisors. I mean, it was like, no, no consultation, no process really. It was just like, let's do this. You know, he, he reports to the Board of Supervisors, not to the leggy. So I mean, if it can happen that fast without consultation.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I like that. Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm in. I'm, 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 I buy that. Uh, councilwoman, uh, Penrose?
Yeah. My feeling is, Bob, if you're going to be talking to Mike about this, you might want to see, see Scott Morrow at the same time. It may be that the Scott as a coast sider was the one that instituted the 11 to five order. That would be my guess, that he was influential in it. So including him in your original email to Mike might make sense.
Yeah. And I'm sure he did it to protect us as best as he possibly could, as, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think all intentions were good.
Right.
Reality is, and I feel like half to up to 80% of people who don't live here don't even know about this piece. They won't know how to interpret it. They're going to show up anyway. And and regardless, it's, it seems very difficult to enforce.
Okay.
So again, the more we can, we'll, we'll get some clarity on that. But then again, trying to get a, see if we can get as many parking lots open in any event. Because we're simply going to need that regardless of how people interpret this, et cetera. Right?
Yeah. So, so the next phase on that would be with the caveat, of course, I think there are some of us at least that believe that there may be a time period where if everything goes well, we leave it as is, but there may be a time period where we need to shut them down yet again. So I think as we approach this, we just got to be honest with the fact that, hey, here are the age, here, you know, here are all the people we now know that we need to talk to, to finish this part off. But if we need to go back, we're ready. And everybody kind of acknowledges that there may be a time period where if there's a big second wave of, of, of outbreak that we might need to dial this back again. Is that fair? Bob, in particular, as you, as you reach out? Yeah.
Yeah. Understood. Understood.
So the next topic that keeps coming up is masks. And I just want to be able to also refer people back to this conversation.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
I, I'm seeing that there's a few hand raised. They may, they may want to talk about parking before masks.
Please, please. Sorry.
And Mayor Eisen, I do have an emailed comment about parking as well.
Okay.
So I'll read the emailed comments first and then attendees, if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. So this comment is from Chris Fossard. This is to voice my opposition to the proposed parking permit idea presented by NISVIT. This is not an emergency worthy of the coastal commission exception. This idea would cost money, time, mean more signage, more bureaucracy, more confusion to locals and more policing. A simple solution is to open all beach parking lots, provide more garbage cans and keep the bathrooms clean and stocked. In back of my house at Casa Del Mar, I walked by three huge parking lots, complete with bathrooms and a pay kiosk, completely abandoned. Weeds growing up through the cracks every day. Three giant paved over chunks of the bluff wasted. Why not use those? Have them staffed by one of your many employees instead of having them make signs that say no beach access, which is actually a lie because there is beach access. Some of the lots at Sam's, for example, could be used for outdoor dining as they are doing in Berkeley. I am saying to use those lots in the spirit of generosity because I would not like to see my neighborhood full of tourists either, but that's the way it is now. I also don't like to see the influx of people that have moved here over my lifetime, forever changing the culture, but that's the way it also is. Ticketing, ordinances, sign, signs and more signs, making people feel unwelcome, making them pee in the bushes, putting yellow tape on benches so they can't sit. Telling them to turn around if they are five or 10 miles from home, telling them they can't have a cooler or an umbrella is doing nothing, absolutely nothing to stop the coronavirus. And these actions are opportunistic, punitive and hateful and ruining the coast. We do not own the beach. It is our job as one of the host cities and guardians to the beach to provide some amenities beachgoers, both local and five, 10, whatever miles away. Eventually you'll want these tourists back to pay your salaries through the TOT at the hotels. And there was one other for 6:00 PM. Let me see if it was, no, this one's for face masks. So I'll hold that. Uh, Sue, go ahead.
Hi. I just, I don't have anything, well, what, I just wanted to let you guys know that I, I really do think the parking lot should be opened. But as I've seen in other counties, part of my job is to do research on what other counties are doing because it's part of my job to know what, how they're dealing with these things. And so I had the opportunity to see some of the parks in Santa Clara County, how they put up super helpful signage to kind of ease the traffic flow, getting down to the, into the parks or onto the trails or down to the beaches or, or whatever it is. And so I was curious if, if that's part of the plan because I really do think that if there's a really coordinated effort to tell people just the best way to handle sharing the parking lot, sharing the beach and, and getting around, that, that it would be a lot easier and it would be a lot more successful in the long run. If, if it, if it's handled that way, because they, they've done it so successfully elsewhere.
Okay. What, what exactly are you referring to in terms of directional signs or what? Just so I, I'm clear what you're saying.
They actually recommend, or not recommend, but make paths one way so that people don't kind of be all over each other when they're going down a path. And I know that a lot of the beaches here have the opportunity that to get on the beach from the parking lot one way and then maybe get off the beach another way. Especially if people, people are carrying coolers and umbrellas and blankets and all that stuff. And you're trying to walk down these thin, narrow little paths. They also put up very, you know, very explanatory signs about social distancing and, and how you do it and, and what's required. And I find that informative. I don't find it offensive. And I do find that a lot of people, despite the fact that we've been on lockdown for nine weeks, really don't understand what social distancing is. So I think it would, that kind of thing would be super helpful to make a successful opening of parking lots, a successful opening of the beaches actually happen.
Good, good input. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next we have Kristalyn. Kristalyn, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Um, so I have three things. So the first one is I would like to advocate for the beach parking lots to be opened. My street, my home street is one that does not actually have beach access yet. Our street has been jam packed the last couple of weekends from people trying to figure it out. So it would be nice if they could go into a parking lot. Secondly, I don't know if this would even be appropriate as a part of the conversation. But the trash, even if they don't open the parking lots, if there can be some extra trash pickup of the cans, just, I think, I, I've been, the chamber has been tagged. uh I I've been the chamber has been tagged in multiple social media posts in regards to the overflowing trash on Sunday.
Crystalin, real quick, where is, do you know the location of that?
Um I do not know, I don't off the top of my head. I do know the trash can is right next to one of the city signs, so one of the city beach signs. So um I could look up the post and try to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, I I'd just be curious because I feel like we have Poplar under pretty good control, so I'm trying to figure out where else.
Mister Mayor, I I might have a suspicion. Um my my suspicion is the that Crystalin's referring to what is a typical hotspot um around this time of the year, and that is Surfers Beach.
Surfers Beach.
And a garbage can that's at the top of the stairs, right off Highway one. Um we talked about this a year ago and um this is a situation where the beach, it is a city beach. Um but that trash can is picked up by Recology under under a franchise with the with the Granada Community Service District. We have already been in contact with Recology and the Granadas Community Service District to remind them, insist, ask if we can help uh so that they pick up more frequently, monitor that can. It's now summertime. Uh uh undo what's appropriate for that spot. So we have we have done that al- already.
Okay, it's yeah. Go ahead, Crystalin. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, and I was just gonna say uh it it seems like a lot of the trash in the pictures and stuff are the to-go bags and things from people eating. So A, yay, they're going to restaurants. B, they're leaving it behind. Um and then the last thing is just a selfish request. Um if the anything moves forward with the um parking lots being opened, if I could request that the chamber be notified ASAP just in that um at the visitor center, I'm fielding a ton of calls in regards to people wanting to come to the beach and I just want to make sure I give them the most up-to-date information.
Okay, very good. That makes sense. Yes. Bob, can you just can you just take that one down that as soon as we have direction? I'm sure you'll be letting the council know as soon as possible. We'll include Crystalin inside. Yeah, thanks.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure. Um, okay, good. Anybody else from the public?
Yeah, we have two more. Uh Paulette, go ahead.
I am concerned about opening the the parking. I understand why, of course, that you want to go uh forward with that, but of course what that says uh it's a statement. It's open season, come on down.
Yeah.
And um I don't think it's going to alleviate the parking in the residential area. You know, I think it will just be residential and the parking lots and that we're going to see lots and lots of people. And the problem, even though for me right now it's not a problem because I got a broken ankle and I can't go down there anyway, is uh that people don't do practice social distancing. Uh you know, we've been seeing that all along. We've got a very narrow uh beach path, a coastal path that's extremely narrow to begin with. Uh and eve- and it's even narrower because of landscaping, which makes it super narrow. And essentially, you cannot walk past a person on that path and be practicing six feet of social distancing. So how are we really going to deal with that problem? Um I agree with the caller about signs. I think signs would be really good. Uh I think the signs should say something like that this is a temporary opening dependent on how people behave in regards to taking care of each other. We've got to think, we've got to keep expressing how this is a thing that we're all in together. And nobody is an island unto themselves. So that's uh that's my two cents.
Well, I mean, and and I appreciate that. And I, Bob, how, what is you like? What is your perspective on the open season aspect of what she's talking about? Because there is that I have a slight fear of that, I guess, as well, more or less. It's like if we open the parking lots, we're basically just telling everybody they can come and we're just, you know, what what's what are your thought process? I I can see that. That's why I was curious to get Deborah Penrose's perspective in particular uh on this topic.
So so uh I I do have a thought process that I'll share and and a lot of people might may agree with it and may not. Number one, I I definitely agree with Paulette that it's unfortunate that we see so many people uh not following um social distancing in various parts of the order. Frustrating for all of us. We're all in this together. Um we try to educate. We try to use signs. Uh it's obviously not just the government that needs to be doing this. It's again, it's all of us together that are gonna make this uh mitigate the uh the negative impacts of this pandemic. So that that obviously is frustrating for all of us. Um what what I am see personally kind of observing and also we all have our sources of information is that whether we agree or not, I guess, on a national level, a state level, a county level, a local level, that it's the right time to start opening things, that is happening. Uh so some of us agree with it and some of us don't, but one way, but it is happening. And so that has changed my personal, my personal perspective. I was, I've been in the more conservative camp of we should we should follow the rules and and keep things closed as long as possible, but I get that everyone in this world is on a spectrum of that um discussion. And so now that we're opening, my personal opinion is that we move into a harm reduction phase. Um we're now moving into this phase where people, we can't stop people. It's the tooth, the toothpaste is out of the tube, at least for now. Stores are opening. They're gonna go to the stores. Uh if they can go to the stores, they're gonna go to the beach. The ten mile thing is up, so there's confusion there. So so I was, I watched a a a you know, a special on TV and they talked, doctors talked about this new strategy and it's not a new strategy because it's how how they deal with, you know, drug addicts and it's more about harm reduction now. So my thought is if people are, the best way to to try to promote social distancing is disperse people as best we can. And and we do that by providing is as much open space, open as much open space as we can. If we close beaches, if we close parking lots, if we close parks, then we're forcing people and I'm seeing it when I go out into smaller areas. And we're seeing, I think, just more, you know, congregation and things like that. So people are gonna do bad things, I think, and do wrong things. But to the extent that we disperse people and try to be less dense, I think that's the best, the best we can do as they start to open things up. That's that's just my personal observation at this point, why I personally started to move on the parking lot issue. And I I realize everyone's in their own kind of space on that, on on this. It's a really tough one. So thank you for asking, Mister Mayor. Um but that's just, that's just my my personal opinion on this.
No, I I think that's a great summarization of where we're at at this point. Uh any 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 other council members want to weigh in or Saul? Oh, yeah, Deborah, please.
Well, I just, I wanted to say um of course I've been against opening anything for as long as possible, but that's not possible now because of what the state has done. We're stuck. We can use this as an opportunity, though, to combine opening our beaches, opening our parking lots with parking permits in our neighborhoods. So I think I think we've got a a good argument now to the Coastal Commission to say, look, we're trying to, we're trying to protect people at the same time as we're trying to encourage tourism. And you put the two things in one basket and we've got a better story.
I like it. Um apparent, we have one more public speaker. I'm gonna open that up and then I'm gonna ask for Saul to jump in on this topic.
Uh our final speaker on this topic is Dave Olson. Dave, go ahead.
Hi, uh this is Dave Olson. I'm a member of Mid Coast Community Council, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. Um the eight to five closure of the beaches west of Highway one, actually all parks west of Highway one, was clearly a replacement for the ten mile distance rule, which was confusing to a lot of people, I assume, and I would assume Captain Lopez is gonna tend test to, was very hard to enforce. Uh the eight to five closure copied what was done down in Southern California and is easier to understand. Whether it's easier to enforce or not, I don't know. But if you take away the eight to five closure, then you've essentially said all the beaches and all the parks west of Highway one are now open, period, full stop. And the and the intent was to avoid some crowding. So you have to replace that with something or you have to do something to deal with the additional crowds, even worse than a normal weekend because people have been pent up for two months. And a lot of people want to get to the beach. Um on a parking permit program, if you were to institute that in Half Moon Bay, you would then make all of the parking problems in the mid-coast far, far worse, and I assume also down towards Cal Beach. Um so if that's going to be done, it should probably be unified with county or at least attempt to make it unify with county in some way. Uh I do agree to some extent with the restroom opening. We've had a lot of problems up here, even with the parks closed. People are obviously using uh the bushes next to the trails and that's bad. Um County Parks Director Nicholas Calderon was talking to UCSF on whether that was a worse public health problem than the restrooms themselves. So somebody might want to consult with him. I have not heard his answer on that yet. But if you do open the bathrooms, then you're going to have to hire an army of people to clean them frequently, frequently restock the soap or hand sanitizer or something, or put in a huge number of porta potties and hand washing stations. There've been a lot of issues, people not being willing to use bathrooms because they're worried about them. So if you don't clean them frequently and say so, at the same time you open them, they probably still won't get used. Um finally, on the get trash can at Surfers Beach, Assistant General Manager Delia Camino from G C S D has said the arrangement was worked out with the Harbor District to empty those trash cans and she wasn't sure why it wasn't happening. Could have been their staffing problems when they had somebody go sick. Um but she was following up on that. So if you want to follow up on that, you should uh talk to Delia. Thank you.
Excellent information. Thank you for joining our meeting and participating, Dave. That's that's good follow-up. Thank you so much.
Sure, um you know, again, everybody made very valid points in regards to opening parking lots and even the parking program. I think last time we spoke about the parking program, it would be a staffing uh issue, not only for City Hall, but also for us doing the enforcement. Uh so that's something we can continue to talk uh offline on. Bob and I can speak about that. In regards to preventing people from coming to the beach, I think many of the council members made the point that people are they've been cooped up for two months. And I know we all have the best intentions to not spread this virus and keep everyone uh safe and healthy. Uh but it would be a monumental task because we have to abide by uh the legal issues behind contacting people. So there has to be consensual contact or we have to have a a valid legal uh reason to contact them. We cannot just walk up to someone and say uh you know, where are you coming from? Did you drive to the beach or did you walk to the beach? And if they choose, if they refuse to answer those questions, we can't continue to engage them. That would have been a legal detention. So we have to uh keep in mind of people's uh so civil liberties, obviously. That's our our first priority there when contacting them. So there is a fine line that we do. We we have gained compliance over and over. I know um the face mask issue has come up. We are reminding folks, we are wearing them ourselves as uh you've seen, I wear it. I was just on the beach the other day uh on the Polaris. I intentionally went out there uh yesterday and I drove all the way as far as I could go from the state beach and I could probably count only about twenty people there. Of course, it was midweek, uh but people were basically just walking. There was uh no one picnicking or uh as beachgoers, there was a couple of uh surfers and obviously they had a few items there that they needed. But that's about it. So people are being compliant. Uh and again, the eleven to five restriction, it's gonna be very difficult to enforce. As Bob mentioned, I spoke to the Chief of Pacifica and we're in agreement that it's it's very difficult. If somebody arrives before eleven and they park there and they decide to take a two-hour walk on the beach and now they're in violation at one P M. I mean, how how difficult is that to enforce? So
I would say impossible. Yeah. Uh, okay, good. Good. Um, anything else on this topic?
Yeah, I have one more.
Please.
Just more questions. Um that's interesting what Dave Olson said that um this is what they were the, well, he said down there was eight to five or eleven to five, but he said down in Southern California, they instituted this idea of only locals, right, could be in the beach from certain hours to certain hours. So that just raises a few more questions. Um how the heck did they enforce that down there? I'm curious. How has it worked? It creates its own, and by the way, did the Coastal Commissioner approve that? Because in a sense, it's like an informal permitting process without the permits. The million-dollar question is, how do you know? And if they do have a great system for that, it actually creates an excuse to have a legal permitting system. And you know, City Hall, just for five bucks, I don't know, gives you a little decal on your car window that you live there and you have to prove it, you know, some kind of bill. I mean, I'm just really curious how that system works. It could actually be something if that if people want to go permitting, allowing for those time zones is an automatic permission from the Coastal Commission to do whatever the hell you need to do to enforce that. So it just to me raises more interesting questions. That's all about. What that does or not allow for, so. But I'd love to know they're doing it down there, uh unfortunately, so.
Okay. Uh, does anybody know the answer? Just checking, okay. All right, well, uh I love it. Good conversation. I think we've got our direction moving forward for the time being. Um and then obviously we can discuss again next City Council meeting. Uh hopefully, we in the ideal, will have made the the parking lots accessible by then. Uh and if not, we will discuss again. Uh at this point, uh we will, well, at six forty-seven, we'll do a thirteen-minute recess uh before we start the seven P M. Let people go to the bathroom, uh let people grab a little something to eat real quick and then we'll start the seven P M meeting. Everybody
Face mask discussion.
Well, I'm worried that if we start that discussion, we might end up, but I I'm happy to do it, but we might end up bumping up against our seven P M and also not offering anybody a break in between. Do you want to still do it? Debbie Ruttick, what do you think?
Well, do we want to talk about our 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 mask?
So we we can, we can share something and it'll just take five to six minutes, Mister Mayor. Um that, um so so after last meeting where there was a discussion about hmm, should we mandate face masks? We didn't quite get there, could still come up if you direct us. But but we then, after a series of conversations with Councilmember Ruttick, kind of landed on maybe a softer approach uh of actually producing some of our own face masks and 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 then moving to distribute those. Uh so I'll turn it over to Jessica and Colleen Luteri and they can at least show uh where we're going on this.
Colleen, go ahead.
Okay. Uh good evening, Mayor and council members. Um so as Bob just said, we wanted to debut the design of our masks um that we had. So let me go ahead and pull that up. Excuse me, technical difficulties. Sorry, one second.
The share screen function, is it not working for you?
No, I'm just trying to find the, all right, there it is. So this is the uh mask that we came up with. Um and so um we ordered these and So this is the uh, mask that we came up with. Um, and so um, we ordered these and we're trying to encourage people to wear masks along the coastal trail. Um, the masks will be arriving around the first week of June and we are currently working out the distribution methods, the best way to get them to everyone in the community um, and getting the word out about them. Uh, so I'd just like to say thank you to Councilmember Riddick for your assistance in the design of the masks. And um, we hope that our frequent trail users will be excited about the design and will wear them proudly um, while recreating along the trail. Um, I'm excited. We're excited to debut them. So I just wanted to share that and say thank you.
Yeah, so you know, as, as far as I could tell, one of our biggest, you know, bottlenecks and problems is um, people on the trail. I mean, the beaches, there's lots of room to, to spread out. The trail is somewhat narrow. You have multiple users doing multiple activities. So how do you get at that issue of um, you know, social distancing and, you know, failure in a lot of people to wear the mask? So I, I just suggested to staff, maybe we should have our own mask and why not do something, you know, positive about the trail? So you know, this is just kind of a little pilot that we're, that we're trying out, kind of a low cost to uh, you know, make a splash and hopefully get people to wear masks.
Love it. Beautiful, gorgeous design. Looks like something I'd be proud to wear. Locals will be sporting it all over the place. Well done. Beautiful.
Can you tell me what the point is uh, for the distribution? Are you talking about locals or are you talking about giving them out to the general public or selling them to the public? What?
Uh, I believe, I believe our intention uh, was to have uh, locals be wearing them because they're the ones, we understand that a lot of um, out-of-towners come in and are wearing them or are coming to the trails, but I think our initial goal was to share them with our community first. And so that they could be, you know, sporting them on the trail, um, because they're also frequent users. And that way, um, they're kind of setting a precedent to maybe out-of-towners like, hey, we're wearing the masks, we're here. Um, so it could kind of be encouraging for other people to also kind of fall in line and follow suit. Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of like, uh, you know, trying to create the buzz, if you will. You know, and you know, maybe we hand them out for free first and then maybe we actually sell them later, but the point is to, you know, it's kind of a, a little campaign, if you will, with some social media offshoots and uh, you know, put them on the California Coastal Conservancy social media. Everybody loves the coastal trail. So it's just, you know, sort of a small, low-cost project that hopefully will have health benefits and promotional benefits.
Great idea.
Thank you.
I think staff did a great job on the design.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Bob, how many did we get?
We got 250.
Okay, okay, that's, that's start. Good.
Just to start, so we want to see how many people would be interested in them. Um, and again, we're, we're trying to work on our distribution methods to make sure that um, we're reaching different groups and um, that other people can represent them. So um, we, we still have some time to figure that out before they actually arrive. So.
No, all good, all good. Any questions before we uh, take a little recess or comments? All right, well, Colleen, excellent work, very exciting. Um, and uh, let's take a six-minute recess and we'll come back at seven o'clock. Thank you all for making this happen. Good discussion. Talk to you in six minutes. You can stay, I, Bob, just double check. We can stay on this site. We don't need to log off, log back in.
That's correct.
Stay on the site.
Correct, yeah. Stay, stay logged into this meeting. P C T is going to end the six o'clock recording and then begin a new recording. So we'll be ready to go at seven with that.
All right, perfect. Thank you guys all for your time. Talk to you in five to six minutes.